Okay, we're literally just just called it to order.
I'll tell.
Um, you are are you are good. Um, but I'd like us um, please stand for the the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic. Stand patient, under God, equitable, for the liberty and justice for. Thank you everyone for being here. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the November sixth. Uh, special meeting, and that was a special meeting, if you remember, because of the elections. Do the six. Am I getting motion to approve those minutes?
Good move.
One second, second, okay, any comments, questions?
I have one comment.
Sure.
Um, I think in the minutes, um, the minutes reminded me.
The package on the table.
Oh, sure, the minutes reminded me that. I think the December bulletin was going to have. Uh, repeat the announcement for the grants committee.
And for.
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, we we could double check, but I I I think so. The sustainable Bethany, um, what is it, the?
Oh, wait.
Um, the solid waste.
We actually approving the committee tonight, we had.
Okay, so you don't need more?
We do not.
Okay.
We do not, I I coordinated with Eric on that, and we are approving the um, tonight. It should be in the packet.
Okay, so I think that was just the grants committee, I think it's gonna be.
We will, okay, we can double check that.
Okay, thank you, and again, it might be in there, I just.
Okay.
It is in the minute, and it will, it, yeah, definitely was said that we were gonna repost it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, the minutes reminded me, and I I don't remember. I thought it wasn't in there, but I I.
We'll double check, and then if not, we'll make sure it goes in the January.
Perfect.
So, yeah, that's not a problem, that's an easy, that's an easy bridge.
Perfect.
Um, okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, next item, we do have tax refund, did I review a copy?
I have one here.
Okay, perfect. Um, we have uh, one, two, three, four. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, seven, uh, for a total of three thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and sixty eight cents. May I have a motion to approve the tax refund presented? Anyone?
I'll make it.
Okay.
It was Gina's turn.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'll second that.
Okay, um. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh, we do not have any cemetery beach for tonight, so we're all set on that. Uh, next item is the approval of the replacement member for the uh, park and rec commission. I did put the little file in the packet so you could see. Um, she could actually attend the last meeting they had. Um, and uh, they actually took some of her input, uh, part of conversation during their meeting, so. They approved her uh, for recommending to to us for final approval. Uh, so I just need a motion to approve her.
So, I I remember that she was in the original uh, group that we looked at.
She was, she was, I went, I went back and looked, and she would be the next person in line. Um, basically, that you had, it was a same party replacement. But she would have been the next person in line uh, for that replacement.
If anyone else resigns, do you have anyone else in the room?
I have one other person, but it depends if it's the same.
Okay.
Political party, otherwise we would probably have to um, advertise for it again.
Okay.
I see there were a couple, there were, how many total last time, and there were?
There were eleven.
Yeah, there were.
Say eleven, so.
There were some more people.
There's seven of them now, one's replaced, so this replaced about eight, so. Um, but they were, two, two were before, and one was after.
Before.
Before the deadline, you know, I mean, and then one came in after the deadline. So it would have to be um, whatever the political, if she was.
Oh, right, right.
A, a, um, equal swap, so see. So can I get a motion to approve?
Yeah, I I I made the motion.
Okay, John, sorry, second. Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public.
Yeah, I hope you keep in mind, some, I know some of the other people were interested, if if, I don't know if there are gonna be any vacancies in in the near future.
Right.
You should keep the other people in mind.
I have, I have the folder, their names are in the folder, so I definitely, I, uh, it's an equal swap.
Yeah.
Because they would still be interested in in, because sometimes they, you know, after a period of time, they may not be interested anymore. So then potentially would have to be the evidence.
Yep.
But I I was just wondering if you could tell us why there's no public comment tonight?
It was just a special meeting and just getting through, but we did it the same thing last month, too. It's just a special meeting, the agenda cannot be amended, so just moving forward.
Well, I mean, that we can have special co- public comment and special meetings, so I was just wondering. Whether this is gonna be routine for regular meetings, because I believe there was no public comment.
No, no, it was just, these were special meetings and just moving them forward to get business.
But there wasn't especially, there wasn't public comment in a regular meeting two months ago. So, so is that, it's not your.
There wasn't?
Right.
In October? That's right. I don't recall, I have to go back.
I I even, I even noted that there was no public comment, and you.
I did, I I don't recall, to be honest.
So just, so just, just for, for um, my own um, information, you do plan on having public comment in right, in your meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, because I think the last time it was posted, it said it has to refer to items on the agenda limited to three months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah. Um, as a matter of fact, it was a, it was a conversation at CCM yesterday. It was brought up about um, people concerned about public comment at their meetings and people hijacking meetings, and so they were fitting. Um, they wanted recommendations of wording that they could put on their agendas to keep things focused to the meeting.
So, um, CCM is the reason we didn't have a meeting last night, right?
We didn't get home, we didn't get back here till eight thirty last night.
Okay.
So, um.
But you could have, you could have public comment tonight if you wanted to.
It could have been on, yeah, I'm just trying to move things along, because it's been crazy two days.
I know, some of the meetings that we had, they couldn't say they were all special meetings because they weren't on the, whatever, we didn't have a calendar beginning of the year. Other things dealing with the investigation. We, I think we typically put public comment on, but only on the.
The idea.
Agenda, I think, we were trying to, you know, not, not bring in other stuff to those meetings.
Right, because it's actually focused on the, on the agenda.
Right, so if the special meeting is usually limited, limited to the topics on the agenda, then. People in our community would have, never have a chance to bring up an issue that they wanted to bring up to our attention. That's why I think it's important to have open public comment at some point.
Well, they can certainly, they can certainly contact us outside of a meeting, and then it can be brought to.
Well, no, no, I'm talking about public comment and a person's opportunity to say publicly that they have a concern. So if, if our special meetings are limited to the, those agenda items of the investigation. People would not have an opportunity to bring in an issue that they wanted to bring publicly at a meeting, and that's, so.
Right, it was mostly for our own benefit, that we don't want to hear about a stop sign at this meeting. But, yeah, you could have, you could have, like. At a, at a regular meeting or something, have it the um. Either public comment or both, or you could have different items, one could be for items within the jurisdiction of the board of selectmen. But not necessarily on the agenda, so maybe you could just say. It would be, probably wouldn't be, it probably wouldn't be something acted on that night, but just. If they chose, if they hadn't contacted you ahead of time and got the agenda, but if some people are just gonna say. Something's bothering me, and I'm gonna go to the selectmen's meeting, they, they could do that. You, you could, you know, you could also, to kind of, as a hybrid of two. You could have a correspondence section, and it could be emailed. Like that public comment, if someone wanted to raise the stop sign, and it wasn't an agenda item. It could come under public, it could come under correspondence.
Correspondence or something.
So submit it by way of email, so that you're keeping to the, the goal of keeping the meeting limited. Right? And but you're, you're addressing it through correspondence, and then if it's something that needs to be added to the agenda, it could be added to the agenda to follow me. So that might be a way to.
Well, I, I, I guess, I'm just trying to figure out whether or not we're gonna have public comment, open public comment, like we used to. Because that's what we've done all year. We've had open, open public comment all year, except for this meeting, I think it was two, two months ago. So, you know, I mean, people should know, right, that you have, there can be public comment at any meeting or special meeting. So, we could have had public comment today, tonight, and we should have open public comment at our regularly scheduled meeting, so that's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
But that's all I'm, something to think about.
I don't think, I don't think it's gonna come up that often, that people are gonna come, but I guess they should be able to, if, if they want to. I, I know in Orange State, they do allow public comment on, but if you start talking about peace in the Middle East, they're gonna stop, you say, this is not, you know.
Trying to keep focused to the business.
Right, right, it's not just to try to use our cameras to make a broadcast, it's um. Has to be within the jurisdiction, and sometimes if it's not something that's on the agenda, that people will bring it up, and they'll either be told. You know, you need to check with the police department on that, or they may get an answer that night, if you're in the wrong place.
Remember, too, that it is just public comment, it's not public conversation, unless it's some kind of.
Yeah.
Immediate issue, but it's basically just public comment.
True.
It's not, it's not a conversation.
Sometimes if it's a simple thing, though, you, it will end up that way, like, oh.
Yeah.
Legitimate point, you're in the wrong, you know, just in, in the wrong place, but we'll direct you the right way. Or, you know, you're complaining about a state road, we, you know.
Not ours.
You're not gonna just like be silent and not help them.
Yeah, or it's something you say, we'll have to follow up with you.
Yeah.
You know. So, yeah, okay.
So you think the January meeting will have public comment, regular?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
I mean, I'd like it to be, I mean, like I said, this was a, this was brought up yesterday by multiple municipal leaders. Um, about, like you said, people kind of taking off on other subjects that don't pertain to the town business, and if they're, they're concerned about. Keeping control of their meetings and and staying focused on the business that has to be addressed. So, um, they were looking for, and I think someone was going to get back to them with the verbiage, it was one of the um. Workshops, I think, somebody was gonna get back to the municipal leaders with regard to what you put on for um, wording, verbiage. On your agenda, and that's something you could discuss that in future meeting.
Yeah.
If it's on the agenda. Let's have public comment, uh, discussion.
So.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I've always heard the Board of Ed does, I don't know, once or twice a year, this open session.
They do an open forum.
Open forum, but I don't know whether that's the only time they listen to public comment, or it's the only time they respond to it.
No, they do have it on their agenda, they do have open.
A lot of frustration I hear from people addressing the Board of Ed is that, they never respond, right?
Comment.
Like, if we comment, and they, we never hear back from them. Uh, so, you know, it's a balance, you know, it's really a balance that you have to allow, but not, try not to frustrate.
Well, the Board of Ed has every right to say, we heard this concern, we're gonna put that on the agenda and respond.
But that's.
They have every right to be.
Every, every board has every right, but the frustration that people walking away at night is, but they didn't respond to me, they didn't, you know. So, and Boards of Ed are notorious for, you know. I think, I think they're all taught to not. Exactly. No. This tends to be more with the meeting.
Yeah, well, okay, I think that's, I think it's.
Um, all right, so that was the part of our question. The next item is the approval of the members for the solid waste recycling with by your committee, and you have that list in your packets for approval. I just want to confirm what the um, mission of the group is going to be, because we kind of listed two different things, but they sort of. It can come together as one piece. So it's basically that the.
What, what do you mean you listed two different things than us?
Well, Erica brought to my attention that we've kind of worded it a little differently in the bulletin, as opposed to what, what is in your packet right now.
Okay.
So basically, what it's going to be is the committee is, is going to, their, their goal or their.
Issue.
Uh, mission, thank you, is to educate the public on how to manage our waste in order to reduce the town's disposal costs and increase recycling rates. But it's also to create sustainable, cost-effective solutions that reduce waste, improve recycling rates, and promote financial responsibility and managing. Yeah, excuse me, managing town resources.
Is that the language that was in the bulletin?
Um, that was in the bulletin, and the, in the, in the um, was a, was slightly different, but it's, it's more like. Kind of encompassing the same thing, so.
Did you read it again?
Sure, well, um, yeah, she's gonna have it in the minutes, she took a picture, and she's gonna have it in the minutes, but I will read it again.
A picture of the bulletin?
No, for sure.
What I'm reading is to educate the public on how to manage our waste in order to reduce the town's disposal costs and increase recycling rates. Um, and also to uh, create sustainable, cost-effective solutions that reduce waste, improve recycling rates, and promote financial responsibility in managing the town resources.
Okay.
Okay, so um, you do have the list in front of you, so may I have a motion to approve, excuse me, approve that list?
I move.
A second?
Were these all of the people that, that were there?
Okay, exactly.
So I, I don't know if Connie Royster is gonna be okay, it's not a very balanced uh, committee politically.
Well, we weren't going for politics, we were going sort of with background and and not, not.
No, I, no, I understand, I, I'm being facetious about that.
You know who the political affiliation of all these people? Um.
I would guess all Democrats, I don't know Mr. Hawes.
I have no idea on Bush.
I don't know, Erica, you know.
I'm not sure about Mr. Hawes or Mr. Wielding, but I know the first three are part of it, that's what I don't know the other two.
No, Eric said he's unaffiliated.
He's unaffiliated, okay. Um, so we were not looking at political affiliation, we were looking at more.
No, I, I understand, I'm kind of being facetious.
All right, well, because we, we have.
And I'm sure that uh, other people were not breaking down the doors to get on.
No, no, they were not, so, um, yeah, we were looking.
But if other people become interested, then you can have them to look.
Certainly, I mean, they're more than welcome to, when, when the committee starts to meet, they're certainly more than welcome to attend the meetings. To, to give input and, you know, uh, ask questions and whatever, so.
So what, what do we as a board expect? Do we expect a presentation from them, or a report, or?
I love to think that, well, well, I'm sure it's gonna take them a couple of months or so to kind of get acclimated to how they wanna work things. Um, but it would be nice, maybe every couple of months, if Eric could come back um, to, to give us an update on the, on the committee, and, and what they're doing. So, uh, would be nice, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
We'll be flexible on, on that.
Yeah, so, um, we have a motion, we have a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Eric, you're, you're all set, okay?
Thank you.
Um, all right. Uh, so.
Actually, so, um, just because this is part of the agenda, I'm wondering if, I know she has the language, but is it gonna say as amended? And this is the full language, or I'm just.
She's gonna write it down, if this is the full mission of the committee, yeah, so write it as that's the full mission of the committee, so it's recorded and, and for historical purposes.
Okay.
Okay, um, as far as the uh, housing advisory committee, um, we have advertised board, I think I've had. Two, possibly three responses so far, so there's really nothing happening with that right now, we're. Uh, gonna hope, um, I'll, I'll, you know, kind of follow up with Alex, depending on how many more we may get in the next few weeks, I know the holidays and people are kind of not. Focused on this maybe, so I'll, you know, check with him and see if he wants to advertise it again in the January bulletin, just as a, you know, follow up to see if, uh, after the holidays, more people pay attention to it.
This was in the most recent one.
It, it was, yeah, this is, this is by January, so, um, we'll see, uh, we've only had a couple of responses right now, so.
So maybe, maybe the January is going to.
Right, right, if there's no one that comes in by January, I'll have Alex, if he's okay, we'll, we'll post it again, um. In the January bulletin and see what kind of response we get. At that point.
Okay.
Um, I do have uh, our fire marshal Steve Sousa here, uh, you do have the packet, I gave you everything that he has provided. Um, with regard to this program, and I'm gonna let him do a little presentation, uh, and then you certainly ask inspections. Uh, but it is a no cost uh, thing to the, to the town, so. Um, okay, I, they do have everything that you gave me, I did provide it in the packet.
So, what, what this is, it's a company, it's called Compliance Engine. And what happens is contractors that do like sprinkler servicing, alarm system servicing, extinguisher servicing, all that stuff that's required under an FPA. They've all put their reports into this compliance engine. If a company that's working in your area finds something wrong. Then the, the authority having jurisdiction, which would be me, would get a notification from them that, hey, you know, ABC went out to do the sprinkler system at. CFC, and a hundred sprinkler heads were painted, it need to be replaced. We would get that notification, that would allow us to enforce things in real time. Rather than on an annual inspection, that could be six months after, and this safety issue has never been. And I don't know if people are familiar with the, the workplace, but there's a lot of people that go through there on a daily basis.
I know.
Yeah, so something like that could be a big issue. Um, it doesn't cost us anything, the cost is incurred by the contractors. The contractors pay a fee to put the report into the system. That fee is what funds our program. Contractors like it because we go out and enforce the problem. The contractors potentially end up with the job to fix it. So it's a win-win, in essence. Uh, so they, they have no problem paying to put their report into the system. We can set this up that the Bricer can handle anything, if we were to have fines or anything with anything, they could send all that out. They could handle all of the uh, correspondence or whatever, and then they just notify me as to. What they've done at that particular time for that particular case. Or we can handle it all ourselves, and they just report to us when there's an issue. We can set it up any way we'd like to, but the main thing is it, it gives us real time data, gets us. Into these places to fix the problem right away, and it's no cost to us. Yeah, the cost will be the business if they don't have to pay it. The, the companies like Mac Fire, that want to do the work.
Mm-hmm.
Or the, you know, their annual services or whatever, they're the ones that pay. Yeah, but they're not, they're gonna pass it on to the uh, business. It, it's a twenty dollar fee that they pay to put the report in the system.
So does this affect um, like, like residential?
No.
This is just for?
This is mostly commercial stuff. Um, residential stuff, our hands are tied, unless it's three families or more. And that may be even changing in the code pretty soon, they, they may even say. You know, we're not even gonna inspect houses unless there's six or more families in it. So that, that's something that's.
But I mean, like residential, like homes get inspected for things all the time, so that doesn't.
Unless.
I'm like, really like.
Unless it's three families or more, they don't get inspected by, by the state laws. State laws is like. For the fire, they, they get inspected by the building, but.
Right, right.
Not, 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 not only when they're doing work. Right.
I think that's where I'm confused by.
Yeah.
Like, what's the difference, like, what requires your inspection, what is, requires only like a.
The state, state has timeframes for certain types of buildings, or certain uses of buildings. So, it could be, you have to have an annual inspection, you could have one every two years or every three years, depending on what category you fall in. So with these compliance engine type thing. If between now and your next inspection, something goes wrong. We may not know about it, and we may not enforce it to make it safer for people that are in there.
Because you don't know.
Now, we're getting the real time data to go in and have the problem fixed right away. So if I go out and do an inspection tomorrow, and next week they paint all those heads, I won't know it until the next inspection. So now we're getting that as the service or, or the in-depth uh, inspections that we don't do the hands-on stuff. We get that real time from that. Are the um, contractors like sprinkler and fire alarm? Yes, they're all actual licensed and insured. But are they, are they required by law to send their inspection reports to you, or not? Yes, in, well. If we, if we request them, which is what happens with this, this compliance engine. Oh, I mean, currently. They have, they have. Currently get them? If I request it from somebody, yes. But not automatically? No. Okay. But if we request it, they have to give it to us.
It's confusing to me.
Yeah, tell me about it. So if you, I mean, and you request it from every business, or not really? Not unless we have an issue. Okay. If we know there's an issue, then we'll request it, we'll review it, and see. What's not compliant, if it's been fixed, or whatever, but again. I'm one person, this has given me all these contractors that are going out and doing all these things, saying, hey, here's a problem, you need to fix it now, instead of later.
So I put an addition on my house a couple of years ago, and I had lots of inspections, and so none of them had to do with you, right?
That's all building.
And it's, that's because it's residential, right?
Right.
Okay, so this isn't gonna affect regular people living their lives? All right, that's okay.
No.
Okay. So, but I, when I said, does it affect, essentially, I said, like, mostly not, so one does.
What you said?
One, three, four, five, okay, okay, gotcha.
It's more than three families, then it's, then it can be inspected.
Can be, okay.
And you have those two apartments that you, you're calling his. For now, till they increase it. If you pull the permits.
Okay, right, right.
How many, how many businesses have? Yes. Sprinkler systems in here, we've got two or three that we have, but it's mostly alarm systems. Mostly alarm. Yeah, we've been having a lot of issues with alarm systems, as a matter of fact, we just had one that finally got replaced after. I've been in here about three years now, and we just finally got them to replace their system. Because there happened so many problems.
So I have a hypothetical question, what do you think a contractor would say if they were sitting here with us right now, and we asked them, hey, what do you think of this?
You know, they're, they're, from what I'm being told by Bricer, they're the ones that have, that have been pushing it.
But they haven't talked to you, or haven't, they haven't asked you, like, why aren't you using this?
What, the contractors?
Yeah.
No, there's, there's, um. Right now, there's probably about a dozen departments right now that are, that are using, this is fairly new. Uh, Seymour, who I do a lot of work with, back and forth, I talk with them all the time, they're using it, they love it, they said it's great. It, it makes things a lot easier to enforce.
Okay. So who would be against it?
Whoever does a lot of these, pay the money, fix the problem, just like anybody else, you know, just like any problem, you know, in this. You know, the guy that's wrong, that's not fixing the problem, that doesn't want to spend money, everyone's gonna be against it.
Right, right. That makes sense.
But if you want things to be safe, and, you know, you want your insurance to be, in the building when something goes wrong, it can be compliance.
I feel like I understand it, I think. Um, it's just a way of avoiding having to wait that full year till the next.
The sooner we can get the problems corrected, the safer things are for the people that are in those buildings. That may not necessarily know that there's something wrong.
Right.
You know, that, the, the company thinks painting the sprinkler head is fine, it's not gonna do anything, but it actually changes. How that sprinkler head's gonna work, because now it can't heat, sense the heat the way it's supposed to, so. It's gonna take longer for it to heat up enough to activate, now the fire's gotten bigger, now you got more victims, for one.
So what happens in a case like that, where it's been painted, do you?
They have to remove them and replace them.
They can't take, scrape the paint off, right, okay.
Has to be removed and replaced, and that's not, that's not just the state, that's nationwide. Everything we have in the state is nationwide, and then we have stricter stuff on top of it.
Do you think it's good?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Yes, I guess this keep going, yeah. Share with that.
Inspection, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, the toll test for the fire department, at least it's not a call. I'm, I'm sorry.
So basically, what I'm, what, okay with this program going forward, I basically am looking for a motion to approve me being able to sign this agreement, so that we can move forward with it.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm probably gonna vote no for going at this time.
I mean, I think it'd be interesting to have more information.
Yeah, I mean, I could see how the um. This uh, Bricer, I mean, they're, they've got this profit incentive for um. Because the contractors have to file, are gonna be required, I guess the town will have to re, make it mandatory that they file. Um, on, they have to, the contractors will have to sign up and file only through this Bricer company, and they get twenty dollars per submittal. And then that will result in, at least the examples they gave, like, instant notifications with your. Town seal on it saying, you're in violation, you have X days to fix it, and so that contractor is probably, probably gonna be the one that gets hired to fix it. Um. Which is gonna be the case whether I find it or. Right, but, but. Finds it, it's gonna be the same case, they're gonna. You could, you could be going out and doing this too, but this is gonna be, Bricer's good, um. They, they make money off these submittals, so they're gonna, they're gonna have those, and then I, I assume they're also gonna charge when the people put their repair report in, or whatever. I, they didn't say anything about that, they just said that when the initial report is put in. So, uh, the, the cost is not, I mean, the, in the end, the contractor's not gonna pay the cost. He, he may pay it, but it's gonna be passed along to the, to the business. Either, either way, you'll see, keep lettering. Yeah. That's my concern.
I think it'd be interesting to hear from a contractor, just to have, like, maybe another, another view. I think it'd be interesting to hear from a contractor, just to have, like, maybe another, another view of it, um.
Yeah, somebody who's worked with it and.
Right, because I, I, I like what you're saying about the, the safety issues, you know, and I think I'm actually glad to hear that you're saying Connecticut has, um, you know, maybe greater protections than some other states. I, I think that safety is important, you know, important, so.
If you wanna see, maybe if we wanna postpone it to January, maybe we could get someone from Seymour, uh, who's working.
Well, I think, exactly. Contractor rather than the, uh.
Contractor Seymour.
Well, I'll tell you now, you, you call a contractor like Mac or something, they're gonna charge you to have that guy come here to tell you.
Right.
Unless they're putting it in or.
Unless it's somebody who lives in town and wants to volunteer their time.
So, yeah, and I don't, I don't think they need to do that. I don't know. I'm, I'm sort of leaning towards, I, I mean, I like the, the, um, the added safety issue. I, I feel, I would feel more hesitant if this was affecting, uh, homeowners, you know, I, I wanted maybe to.
It's a three-year contract, but I, um.
You can cancel it anytime you have to give it.
I think there are timeframes, because I've read that.
Yeah, it's a ninety day notice, whatever, but they can cancel it at any time, so. Unless we do it as a, as a sort of a pilot, go forward with it and then.
They want the three-year contract, but you.
Well, they do, but we can give them ninety day notice to cancel if we find that it's not.
And you're, you're gonna have to do some upfront work to give them all the, uh, contact information for the businesses and, and what the businesses have in them and which, which things you're gonna want reported on, right? Like, do you want them to do fire extinguisher report? That's gonna be a different company from the sprinkler companies.
Whatever companies that they already have in their system, they're already working with. Which is the majority of companies that are working in these areas, that these towns are all using this.
Well, if we don't come up with an ordinance or something to require them, they can try to, they can try to solicit the contractors, but the, the contractor could decline to participate if they're not motivated.
But then it's gonna make it harder for them to work with us.
Doesn't, this contract requires the town to.
To mandate it.
To, to mandate it, or to work towards mandating it, so, you know, it's.
The compliance is mandated by state law. This is just giving us another tool to get the compliance in.
No, mandating it. You, you will only receive reports through this. Okay, if a contractor sends you another report, that your agreement is, no, it has to come through this Bricer system so they get paid.
Yeah. Either way, we get the report, and we make things safer. That's the bottom line, is the safety of everybody.
Hey, make a comment. This is Kalen Lang online.
I'm sorry, Kalen, no. I'm sorry.
Do you guys have enough information? Two words to vote?
You know, I, I feel like, you know, just like with any issue, you don't have enough information if you don't hear the other side. That's why I was thinking of, like, I, I'm curious about what a contractor would say. I, I certainly don't think we should pay someone to come here and talk to them.
Right.
You know, I don't, I don't wanna go that far, but you know, you, you, I do feel like it would be interesting to have that other piece, because, you know, um.
I'm, I was just wondering if someone from Seymour would, would have any kind of feedback from the contractors that they've been using. Not necessarily having the contractor themselves, but if they're, if Seymour is doing it, they like it, so they're dealing with this, with these contractors. They have to have some kind of conversation or feedback from, from these contractors.
And they've got a lot more commercial than we do.
Right, right.
Move to table.
Postpone.
Well, I, I moved to table.
I'm with you. I don't think it matters.
It doesn't matter.
But by putting it off, then Kalen can comment next month.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah, it'll be a regular meeting.
Now, I'll talk to some of the fire alarm and the, yeah, sprinkler contractors, just asking if they're familiar with it.
Gina, you were seconding.
I am second, yeah.
All in favor to postpone?
Alright, but I said table.
Yeah.
I, I think it's insane.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thanks.
The difference between twelve and a dozen.
Okay, um, with you.
Technically, no, but.
Well, for, because of FOI, there's really no, you can't, you can't just hold anything over without having it on the agenda anyway.
Okay, um, Solar Farm is still referring to the closure on that, haven't they?
No, well, there's nothing for the town to be.
No, I could.
On this, it's just, uh, attorney Rashad, uh, last communication was back in July saying we're close to closing. Uh, I did have communications with him at that time, and we'd be waiting for them to come forward, uh, to work with our members. There's really no action that is going to be required.
Thought it would be nice to kind of get them closer to know that it was sort of.
Yeah, once the deed is recorded.
Well, then we'll know. Then we'll know. Okay, uh, Simpson, we had given them the deposit, and we're just waiting on.
Yes, I, I received an email from attorney, uh, Francois on the nineteenth, uh, where, uh, she and I have been working together, uh, and, uh, the Odebon easement terms are more or less completed, and they're being reviewed by DEEP, and we're expecting DEEP to forward the funding paperwork to us in a in the short term. I'm gonna say the immediate term.
Does the, the seller now have power to convey? Because there's probate issues?
They're still working through their probate issues. There's, um, three estate, three or four estates that it's going through. I think I explained last time about how title had not been properly transferred, uh, from the, the estate of Norman to the, to the, uh, then, uh, 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 the wife. Of course, there was a belief that she owned half, when in fact she didn't own half.
Oh.
Right? So they had only conveyed a half interest instead of a whole interest. So now technically, the original estate still owns half, the, uh, second estate owns half, and then one of the sons has now deceased, so his heirs have an interest in it. So there, there are three estates that attorney, uh, the attorney is working through, but he claims that they'll all be resolved in time to convey and, uh, we have until, and, uh, fully the table first to get this done.
Yeah. There is life at that end of the channel?
Yeah, at least, yeah, at least have an end date.
Yeah, so we just don't have to wait for the estate stuff to get settled, then?
Even if we were ready to close today with, uh.
If they're not, yeah.
They're not gonna do it, but in order for us to get funding, uh, we have to get the, uh, funding documents. Once we get the funding documents, where we can sign, which the first likely is already authorized to execute, uh, then we have to send that back to the state, and that has to go to the treasurer's, uh, office, and I think it takes thirty to forty-five days to put funding from that point.
And we're gonna get the funding tax from soon, right?
Well, as soon as they send them to us. It's with the Attorney General's office.
Hurry up and move. You know, hurry up and move.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Uh, eleven is still on hold, uh, grants, Leslie?
The Board of Finance at their, at our meeting next week will be reviewing the remaining morsels of ARCA funds and assigning those to projects so that all funds are encumbered by the end of this calendar year. And the dollar amount that is still available is less than forty thousand dollars, and I have projects that exceed that on my desk. It's just up to the Board of Finance to decide how they want to allocate that, that money. Um, the only other update I have in regards to the grants is that, um, we had applied through Senator Murphy's office on a FEMA grant to turn the lodge into a FEMA-approved shelter, and they have denied our application. That's what I have for.
Did they say why?
I do not know, I did not receive the email, um, the email to Jen Capasso, and I just heard from her via text that we did not receive it. I'll have more information on that when she returns to the office.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested in knowing why.
But probably just, well, the, the limited amount I heard about it, you know, and this is why they kind of went to go for the grant committee, I guess they, they had this idea and they threw it together, but it was like, well, in order to get this FEMA grant, we had to put a sprinkler system in, and we are generators and all this stuff to make an emergency shelter, and it's like, you're practically in Beacon Falls and most of the town can't get there. It's not really the best, uh, so in other words, if we were trying to get some money to do other renovations, we're adding all this cost. I guess if the federal government were giving us all the money, but there's gonna be ongoing costs to sprinkler systems and generators and that, um, I mean, it really doesn't make sense as a emergency shelter. Every, every town, every town building is, gets talked about as an emergency shelter, but then it doesn't really pan out that way. Like, when they're trying to sell a project, it's like, oh, this will be an emergency shelter.
Some of them are just warning facilities, um, for people to charge, charge, you know, devices and just be warned, uh, but you never know what kind of storms are gonna hit and what kind of access to different buildings.
That hangar was gonna be one, that more recently we talked about the highway garage offices. The, uh.
We're good, um, so basically, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Leslie, what are you done?
Um, yes, I am, I am, I am finishing reporting on the existing grant projects, but we are still looking for members to serve on a grant think tank committee.
Yeah, well, we'll definitely repost that for the January, uh, bulletin, so. Um, our next item is adjournment. Motion. All in favor? Aye, and it is, uh, seven thirteen. Thank you, everyone who attended virtually. Um, have a good evening.